Good morning, at this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Everyone to mute their phones unless they're speaking. I'd like to call upon Dr. Simpson to call the role. Dr. Simpson?
Sorry, my technology wasn't cooperating. Good morning, everyone. Mr. Shawn Barton?
Present, good morning.
Ms. Bates?
Present, good morning.
Mr. Crawford?
Good morning, President.
Mr. DeShiel?
Good morning, President.
Spaghetti?
I'm here, good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Green?
Present.
Ms. Howie?
Present.
Dr. Lee? Dr. Lee? Ms. McCusker?
Present, good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Molly McCarthy?
Present, good morning.
Good morning, Dr. I'm sorry, Ms. Marley?
Present.
Good morning, thank you.
Good morning, President.
Good morning. Dr. Wilcox?
Good morning, everyone, present.
Good morning, and Mr. Wolf?
Morning, everybody, present.
Good morning. The call is complete.
Mr. Show?
Uh, you have a, you have a quorum, only Dr. Lee is missing.
Okay. Thank you very much. I want to welcome the board members, the staff, and members of the public and, um...
I'm sorry, President Crawford?
Yes.
I do not call Dr. Salmon.
Oh.
Thank you, well, I appreciate that. I'm here.
My apologies.
Again, I wanted to welcome the board, the staff members, and the public, and we really appreciate everyone taking part in this meeting. This meeting will be conducted virtually. The board members will be participating today both by audio and video. The public can access the meeting through the Town Hall streams and the YouTube streaming. Both options can be accessed from the State Board meetings website. The meeting agenda materials are also posted there. The archived video will be posted on the website. Only board members and staff will be able to speak. Board members are asked to hold their comments and questions until after the presentation. Board members and staff are asked to identify themselves when speaking. Dr. Salmon will respond to questions, or she'll have a member of her team to do so. I will ask Dr. Simpson to take the role for any votes or actions that we may have, and we'll ask Mr. Show to ratify that. I'd like to just open by just making a few comments first. We really, really appreciate all of the comments and the letters and everything that we have received. And what that shows is that they're, uh, that this is an important topic. And that we, uh, the education system in the state of Maryland is very blessed to have so many smart, concerned, and engaged stakeholders who care deeply about education in Maryland, who care deeply about educating our children. And you couldn't ask for anything better than that. We have stakeholders, we have elected officials at the, at the state level and at the local levels who are engaged and concerned. That's just great. We have groups, we have teacher organizations and unions and administrators and education policy people, parents, businesses, public health. At such an important time as this, you couldn't ask for a better set of stakeholders. People who are engaged, people who took time out of their schedules to send us letters, send emails. And we didn't just get them from these important people, but we've also gotten notes and emails from individuals. Perhaps, you know, as we really think about it, maybe some of our most important stakeholders are the parents of children. Who see education as a way to help their children achieve a better life than they had. So we really appreciate that. We take all of this, all of the information, all the input, all of the concern into account. And we, as a board, with that, and again, with input from all of these different groups, we try to come up with the best thing we can do in terms of educating our children to do this in the best way we can, to create the best education system that we can, to be able to educate children in as safe an environment as we can. You know, during this pandemic, um, there are going to be a host of very important issues like today. And some of this, we are writing the book as we go. There is no guide, there's no perfect guide, and we're trying to figure this out. And we're trying to do this in a way that's inclusive, that engages not just the board or MSDV, but engages the broader community in trying to figure out the right way forward. Some of these issues are going to be difficult issues, hard issues. And, and trying to do the right thing, as I've found, I think many of you have found as well, quite often is, is hard in the short term. And I think what we're trying to do is, we're trying to do that. We're trying to listen as we go so that we can understand and that we will continue to improve. So we appreciate everyone's engagement, and we appreciate, uh, Dr. Salmon and, and the, and the great work of the MSDV team in preparing. At this time, what I'd like to do is to, uh, turn, um, the discussion over to Dr. Salmon and her team to walk us through, um, this incredibly important topic of student engagement. Dr. Salmon, thanks a lot for everything. We appreciate all that you do and your team.
Thank you, President Crawford. Um, and now I'm going to ask, uh, Mary to start sharing the PowerPoint, and Dr. Williamson will lead us off. Thank you, Dr. Williamson.
Thank you. Um, good morning, President Crawford, Sally, members of the board, and Dr. Salmon. Thank you for the opportunity to address you again regarding synchronous instruction. Mrs. Gable, Dr. Lawson, and I have put together some additional information regarding that topic to address some of the questions that you had. I wanted to take just a moment to remind you of what led up to this morning's meeting, a meeting that is focused specifically on the synchronous and asynchronous instruction. At last Monday's board meeting, we had prepared for you an overview of information that we had collected from the school system recovery plans. Those plans had been submitted a little more than a week previous to our board meeting. And we had developed a PowerPoint to reflect the questions for which you had indicated we would like information on how our local school systems had addressed them. There had been seven of those areas. One of those areas was that of student engagement. That was of interest because we had heard repeatedly from parents that the instructional program provided between March and June was less than satisfactory. We all recognized that was because we had been suddenly thrown into remote instruction, and most of us weren't prepared to meet the needs of our students in that environment. In addition, purchasing digital devices and ways to aid in expanding the connectivity opportunities for our students, we at MSDV and our local school systems have done much training to prepare teachers to provide more synchronous instruction. I've heard many reports in the news media that school systems have indicated students would be engaged in more rigorous instruction, and that there would be more synchronous instruction where teachers actually engaged in the instructional program with his or her students even though it was through a remote system. In order to provide you with the information you requested, we had collected from the local school systems the amount of instruction they were providing for synchronous hours of instruction, and reflected it in the chart. And after reviewing what had been submitted, we made a recommendation of what we thought would ensure an equitable program for all students across the state. After some discussion, got that data in the charts, the board asked if we would pause the discussion and that you would like to come back and devote a separate ninety-minute meeting to that topic. You asked that we reflect on our recommendation and consider if it actually would be possible for school systems to transition to additional hours since their calendars were already set. We followed through on your request, and since our meeting last week, we reminded school systems of the definitions of synchronous and asynchronous instruction, and provided examples of each to them as you suggested we do. We provided each school system an opportunity to review the data we previously submitted, and we updated our charts with those systems that modified their information, and we had a number of them that did that. In terms of the days and hours schools are required to be in session each year, there is a requirement that all schools are to be open one hundred and eighty days a year and provide at least six hours of instruction daily. This has been a requirement for many, many years, more than a hundred as a matter of fact. And school systems have to submit in writing to MSDV before the school year that they're planning to do that. According to our records, all school systems had indicated they would need that requirement. When we reviewed the data submitted regarding the amount of time students would have synchronous and asynchronous instruction, we reflected that only the school systems met that requirement across our board. Our intent then, for our recommendations last week, is to try and bring consistency across our state. And Mary said we had pulled together some new information for you, and Mary is going to share with you the law and the term of that.
Days and the number of hours for a student in pupil attendance for at least one hundred and eighty actual school days and a minimum of one thousand eighty school hours during a ten-month period in each school year were indicated in the code. This information is also indicated in our Code of Maryland regulations that schools should be open a minimum of one hundred and eighty days. As Dr. Williamson mentioned also, we did share and have been sharing definitions of synchronous learning and examples. Synchronous learning is online or distance education that happens in real time to with the whole class or a small group, and it is teacher-led. Before you, you see some of the examples, teacher instruction, small group, as I've mentioned, collaborative or large group, collaborative groups, assessment, office hours, et cetera. Additionally, there is time for asynchronous learning. What is asynchronous learning? We launch online channels without real-time instruction. Forms of education, instruction, and learning, they do not occur in the same place or the same time, using resources that facilitate information sharing outside the constraints of time and place with teacher and students. As you see before you, some examples of asynchronous learning, maybe pre-recorded, video lessons, assigned readings, independent practice, and so on. We have reviewed plans, the twenty-four plans of the local school systems. But in particular, we reached out to superintendents to ask them specifically about student engagement projection for their grade bands, pre-K, grades from K through two or pre-K through two, depending upon how the system listed it, grades three through five, grades six through eight, and grades nine through twelve. Each of the local school system provided that information to us for both synchronous and asynchronous times, days per week, hours per day, or a total of hours per week for... Were you, excuse me, with our student engagement projection, or all the grade bands as indicated?
Pardon me just a minute, uh...
Yes.
...to get a goddamn note from the public, um, indicating that it's hard, that it's been difficult to hear in the meeting, uh, some background noise. So again, we ask everyone, if you're not speaking, to mute your phones. And for those of us who speak, to make sure that we try to speak, um, maybe a little bit louder if we can. Thank you very much. I apologize for the interruption.
That's quite all right, Mr. Crawford. Thank you. So as I was saying before, we are just providing for you each of the local school systems the indication of hours and days per week. We are happy at the conclusion and during the discussion to answer any questions you may have. But at this time, I will return it back over to Dr. Williamson.
Okay, so before we get into discussing the recommendations, I just would like to make a couple of comments again. Um, you've heard Dr. Salmon say more than once, and Mr. Crawford, I heard you say this today, that we are forging new pathways because we have never before had an electronic pandemic. In previous pandemics, we didn't have the option of going to totally remote instruction. We had had to develop new processes and procedures that everyone, ensure everyone is safe and that we're accomplishing our mission of ensuring our children are experiencing a strong instructional program. And that's certainly taken a lot of effort on everyone's part because we've had to learn new strategies and techniques for doing that. There's a lot of controversy out there, we know that, and it's coming from all directions, but one thing is for sure. None of these recommendations that we have before you will be successful if we aren't working on this together. And we really try to pride ourselves on working legally with all of our, all of our members of our, uh, education groups because we know that that's where things happen, is out in the school systems. And we have to be sure that we've provided them the tools to do that. I think I can safely say that since the pandemic came upon us, we have worked closely with our superintendents, our assistant superintendents, and our stakeholder groups, and they've had wide representation across the state. Um, I mentioned the superintendents and the assistant superintendents because you heard us say from March, when this all began, that Dr. Salmon was very much engaged with meeting with the superintendents to discuss what was happening and what their needs were so that we could try to deal with them as quickly as possible. And we've made every attempt to provide guidance that was requested and the non-negotiables as requested, and as much time as possible for plans to be developed at the local level. And we're working as quickly as possible to review them now and provide feedback to the local school systems, just as we did with the continuity of learning plans. This is all about trying to make sure we have the best we can offer in all school systems. We certainly recognize the hard work that has gone into the development of the recovery plans and the hard work that's going on in each of our school systems. So you have in front of you two options for recommendations. And we had found from our work with our ESOP plan that providing the board with options sometimes was very helpful to them because they could see things from different perspectives. And hopefully, um, we have one to recommend that you would be supportive of. If there are pieces you like of both of them, not to say that we can't modify what's up there, but hopefully we would come out of this meeting today with some recommendations to help us move forward. So you will see that, um, you have an option A, and Mary, I'm assuming you have that up there. And I'm going to try and read, and I don't really want to read it to you. I know you've seen this one before. This is, um, fairly much the one that had been up there before. It talks about being one hundred and eighty school days, which is, as Mary showed you, part of our law, part of the law for schools, education. Um, all schools would have a total of six hours a day. And that doesn't mean it has to be all synchronous or all asynchronous. It just means there has to be a combination of time that students are getting instruction, um, teacher. And I always think of it like a regular classroom teacher teaches all the time. They're in front of the students some of the time, and then they have them doing some activities. That can count as synchronous instruction, by the way. If you provide an activity and some discussion, and then you have them do an activity as a follow-up, that's still a part of your synchronous instruction. Or they could do something asynchronous where they may have something that has been pre-recorded or sent out and that they're, um, working on that. But six hours is what is recommended across the day. That's part of our education law. Um, a school day for each school system has to include a recommended number of hours of synchronous instruction per grade, and I think we had suggested last time, three and a half hours, and I can't read what's on there, but I think it says three. I can't see, I cannot even read our own stuff. Go back to my paper. Um, and that they must have indicated that they're not returning, um, returning students in person until second semester, uh, should then reevaluate. And we'd asked that because we were hoping that as things get better out in our, um, communities, that we're going to be able to bring students back more quickly than we had perceived so that this continual looking back, see if we are in a situation where we can start bringing more students in. And I do recognize what has to happen when you decide to bring more students in because that involves any more other services that have to be considered. But that would be a recommendation. And then recommended minimum hours, um, needed to be implemented, um, in September, at the end of September. And that was the, um, option A. I'd be better off to read, unless you can enlarge that, Mary. I'm going to go back to reading it off of my, um, paper. It's printed too big for my paper. Can you make that any bigger? So that when we go to the second one, it's easier to read.
Uh, yes, I'll work on that.
Mr. Crawford, um, I was going to ask, I would flip over to, um, option B and then come back and turn it over to you to discuss with the board.
Sure, sounds good.
Would that be the way to do it?
Yes, that's better.
All right.
Better.
Okay. That's much better, Mary. Thank you so much. All right, so I'm going to just go back to this one that I read incorrectly the first time and say that third item, a school day for each local school system must include the recommended minimum hours of synchronous instruction for each grade band. And the reason we had grade bands on there, I'll just remind you of this. Um, when we had the discussion last Monday, um, we had had an average of, uh, three and a half hours, I believe. And the board members had asked if we would consider grade bands because was that really what we wanted to have at the primary grades or at the upper grades? And would we take a look at that? I think the, um, document we sent out at first did have some grade bands in it, and that's what this is referencing. Um, then the fourth one says, half-day pre-K schools, um, would have a minimum of one and a half hours of synchronous instruction. And, um, I would like to explain that when it says three hours or it says one and a half hours of synchronous instruction, that doesn't mean at one time. It would, um, I have an example of a student's schedule from, um, one of our larger counties, and someone's child was telling me has four, um, periods that they're going to have during the day. And they're forty-five minute periods, um, the teacher's with them part of that time, and then they have an activity to do afterwards, and then they come back together and they talk about it, much like a regular classroom. And Mrs., um, this, this, this is, this is, recognizes that pattern because it's what we do when we're teaching in our regular classroom. We don't stand in front of the kids the entire day. It involves them engaging in activities, and then they do something to follow up, and then we come back and we check on, on learning, and then we go on to something else. Or we go on to continue working with that topic. So that is recommendation A. And it had, um, a request for people that did not have the minimum hours implemented at this point to have that done by September twenty-eighth. That had been your question to see if there was going to be a possibility in doing that. Of course, we would have to be providing support to help people transition to that. If you go to option B, to see if you can see the difference, um, because there had been some concern that we had confused people with the, um, option A or had not been as clear as possible, we went back and we did some revision. And so we have what's in law, the one hundred and eighty days a school year, and we have the six hours a day in whatever configuration that is, synchronous and asynchronous. Students doing some independent work, et cetera. And schools would have an average of three and a half hours of synchronous instruction spread out over the course of the day. But within that six hours, they might have a forty-five minute period where they have the teacher talking with them and then do some follow-up work. They may go on to something else that is, um, something that was recorded or it was more asynchronous. And then again, back to having some synchronous. But the course of, um, three and a half hours of synchronous instruction throughout the day where they've seen the teacher live, there's communication, teacher and students. And then, um, that could be small group or, or, um, large group, and I think Mrs. Gable shared some of that with you in the examples. Then with the half-day for each local school system, having a minimum of one and a half hours of synchronous instruction because they only have a two and a half hour school day. So some of that would be, of course, teacher leading because pre-kindergarten students are not able to do as much independently at the beginning, so you would be working towards, um, release, more release time, but not all release time. And then the fourth one, fifth one, MSDE would collaborate with local school superintendents and provide technical assistance as they work to implement the minimum hours of synchronous instruction and work with local school systems in collaboration with local health departments to consider strategies to return students to in-person instruction by the end of the calendar year. And that would be the, um, bigger change. That and the, um, removal of the grade bands and just saying three and a half hours across all grades, an average of three and a half hours across all grades for synchronous instruction. And that's not to say we can't look back at option A and say, well, I really like that piece about technical assistance. Are you going to add that back there on the one that said September twenty-eighth? And this is really, um, two options for you to discuss. And to, um, if you have questions about whatever was in the PowerPoint, I'm certainly willing to go back and discuss those areas. And I'm turning it, I would turn it to Dr. Salmon if she would like to make a comment first or if she's going to wait until afterwards. Dr. Salmon?
Thank you, Dr. Williamson. Um, I'm going to turn it over to President Crawford to, uh, open the discussion.
Very good. Thank you so very much, Ms. Gable and, and Dr. Williamson. At this time, I'd like to just open this up for questions, discussion, uh, from board members. Uh, since this slide is up, I can't see, uh, you. If you could then, um, speak up and give your name, uh, because I'm not able to see everyone. I want to keep this slide. We'll have it there as a reference.
Ms. Rachel McCusker?
My name, Ms. McCusker.
Good morning, President Crawford, Dr. Salmon, uh, Dr. Williamson, Gable. Um, I, uh... I, before we go into main discussion, this option that is just being presented this morning will not have been presented for the public to be able to comment on prior today. This is brand new, it is the first that the board has seen it, to my knowledge, I had not seen it. And so the public has not been able to comment on it. I think that leaves the public out of our process if we are bringing things to the table the day of, when we do not have the opportunity for public comment. So I would like to begin by saying that I think that it is not necessarily appropriate for us to bring extra options to the table unseen on a day, oh, my light's just automatically turned out in my classroom, I'm sorry, unseen on a day of when we don't have public comment on it. The public may have wanted to weigh in on this as well, and we do not know the public's reaction to this as we are trying to make our decision. So as a matter of process, this is something that I find unacceptable.
Thank you. Senator Bates.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. The option A has been in the works for a good bit of time, is that correct? When was that open for the public to see?
On Monday, last Monday.
Just last Monday?
Right, Mary? Yeah, we had a set of options up, or we had recommendations up on Monday. I don't know if it was phrased exactly as option A, but the recommendation.
But the process of putting together that recommendation, you were getting feedback prior to that, or no?
I think, Senator, this is Dr. Salmon, I can answer that, yes. I think this is definitely based on a lot of the feedback that we were receiving, and we've always been able to come back to the board after we've received feedback to provide different options. We did it throughout our accountability process. We had myriad discussions based on interim kinds of options, so that we could get things moving in our accountability system. So this is a process that we use all the time to reflect input from other stakeholders.
Right. Well, I think it is interesting that because there have been comments on option A, the biggest one I've heard was not enough time by September 28th, you know, to get everything in place, but it looks like we're accommodating that with option B. We have to make some kind of change to get these students back into regular learning, and it seems to me we're at least acknowledging the idea that we need additional time to put it until the first of the year. There's a little more planning time and so forth. So that's all I was trying, I'm interested, we can't turn on a dime, and so to have it, have plenty of time to be able to accommodate the changes, I think is really important. Thank you.
Dr. Salmon, I just recalled, it was Friday that we posted the recommendation A in the form that it's in, it's past Friday, for public comment.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that, because I said it was Monday, and we'd had pieces in Monday.
But leading up to that publication of that, there's been communication, correct?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, that's what I was, you know, if this didn't just come as a surprise, everybody was aware that there were some recommendations coming.
Well, actually, option B was based on the feedback we had gotten from that option A.
Again, I was referring more to option A, that there's been a lot of feedback, a lot of time for comment, and option B is resulting in addressing those comments.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a comment. Dr. McCarthy?
Yes, Dr. McCarthy.
So I concur with Senator Bates. I do believe that option B is a response to the feedback that we received from the public. So I concur with everything you said, Senator Bates.
Jeanne Hallie, have a comment?
Please, yes, and Salmon.
Thank you, President Crawford. So these are really two points of information. Earlier on, we learned from the department that many superintendents, they were surveying their families and teachers to determine who wanted to come back to campus and who wanted to be remote. Can you share the data of those surveys with us? That's my first point. And my second point is, in the guidance that was given, there were specific questions about addressing those that had IEPs or identified learning gaps. Can you talk, or have you had time yet to assemble from the submitted plans, how those students' needs are being addressed?
Dr. Williamson?
In terms of the surveys that are being done by the school systems, I do not have that information. I'm sure we could collect it, we would have to ask superintendents to share that with us. And then I think that in terms of the special ed, we will have that information for you by the board meeting, next board meeting, but we are still compiling the feedback for the report. We will have something on this special ed, and as a matter of fact, Ms. Frankowski is actually surveying special ed directors to get some information for another report she has, which will include information that'll be relative to what you just asked. We'll be able to give you some feedback.
So I would like the department to be able to collect that information, if possible, about the surveys that were done. It seems to me that there are reasons why both families and teachers may want to stay remote, and there are reasons why they may also want to return to campus. And those systems that anticipated trying to have a custom response seem to have some wisdom, and perhaps they discovered things in their surveys that would be beneficial to learn. But I'm very interested in that data. And as far as other public comments, I think that there has been a consistent concern around special education children, or children with identified educational gaps, that this remote experience may be more detrimental to them than to other students, and so concern about how those students in particular may be welcomed back to campus more quickly. And that may be in the data you have yet to share, and I'd be very interested in that data as well.
I do know that there are a number of school systems that are bringing back small groups of special ed students as their first groups that they're bringing into the school system. They've recognized that in their EL students and some of their CTE students, and to be the groups that have been targeted first in many school systems. We'll have those numbers for you.
And I'm sorry, my one last comment is, there is a diversity across the plans that we've seen in terms of instructional hours, whether they're synchronous or asynchronous. Do you have any insight in terms of maybe those school systems that submitted a plan that are on the low end, why they were looking at that, given the KMR guidance?
I have not talked personally with any of the systems regarding that at this point. We've been busy collecting the information. It would take going back and talking probably with the assistant superintendents to get some feedback on how they were viewing that. Dr. McCarthy would like to say something, Mr. President.
Mr. Wu, and then Dr. McCarthy, please.
Good morning, this is Jason Wu, student member. My question refers to the second slide, which states, during the review of the submitted recovery plans, in addition to requests for specific hours of synchronized and asynchronous instruction, it was determined that mandated days and hours were not being met in all school systems. I believe it's necessary if you could provide the names of those specific school systems, and if you could also sort of speak on the challenges for meeting those requirements. Thank you.
Well, I think, Jason, that's a great question, and I think it's reflected, the hours are reflected in the chart, and because of the way that it's done in grade bands, it's probably easier to look to the whole right side to see the total hours, which will give you a pretty quick picture of that information.
Dr. McCarthy?
Thank you. I do want to follow up with Hallie's comments about children with IEPs. Yes, it is very important for our children with individual education programs to have synchronous and hopefully in-person learning, because the gap will widen, as it will with our lowest performing groups. But the other thing I want to offer, too, is that when we look at overall our reading data, there are at least 50% of our children who don't read on grade level. And so when they have asynchronous learning as their means of education, they're not able to access the curriculum in the way that they need to in order to learn, understand, grapple with, internalize the information. So I am in favor of looking at synchronous instruction at the very minimum, and then also looking at how we look at, in a very creative way, bringing children back to school, not just because there are many children who don't read well, who don't have IEPs, but also because there are many soft skills that children learn as they navigate their school day, that it's very difficult for them to do when they're learning at home by themselves. So I just want to bring that to everyone's attention, that this is not a simple solution. It's not just children with IEPs, but there are many children who struggle, who don't necessarily have special ed services, because they don't necessarily meet the guidelines.
Thank you. Dr. Lee?
Good morning, thank you. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. It seems to me that, well, first of all, I just wanted to ask, how did we arrive at 3.5 hours as the minimum per day? That would be very helpful to know. I was looking at the numbers, and if we had said three hours, I think 16 to 19 of the 24 districts would already meet that pretty much. So there wouldn't be a big deficiency there to make up. And I also noticed that if the law says there's supposed to be six hours a day times five days, or 30 hours of instruction, regardless of the type of instruction, only 14 of the 24 school districts meet that even for just high school. So a great majority are not meeting that for all the grades under high school. So I guess my question was, when the school districts are creating these plans, were they aware that they're supposed to meet the legal limit of whatever the KMR says of how many hours are supposed to have instruction, regardless of synchronous or asynchronous? Can we get some information about how those standards are determined? I have to say, I feel like there should be some standard and some guidance. I think part of the concern seems to be the timing of it, and if there's assistance that can be provided to the local districts that need to get to the level that we're now saying would be advisable. So can I get some clarity on that?
Thanks, Dr. Lee. This is Karen. I do think you make a really good point in all aspects of, within your questions. And, you know, we were just trying to look at what would be the most equitable thing we could provide going forward, especially knowing some of the school systems were planning at the last minute to go virtual for a whole half of a school year, which is, you know, 90 days. So we were really concerned about the children that Dr. Marilyn McCarthy just talked about, the children that don't learn well online, and, you know, the hundreds of emails I've been receiving from parents, you know, with, you know, saying that they filled out a survey with local systems, that they wanted more direct instruction, and were dismayed when the surveys, when the decisions were made to go virtual for longer periods of time. So we were just concerned about the equity across the state, and that feeling that a standard was needed. We did ask our school systems to turn their calendars in, and they all indicated that they were going to follow the requirements. But then, of course, when we asked about the number of hours, because you all asked us to find that information out, and when we did that query, then we found the situation. So I do agree that, you know, we just made assumptions that we probably shouldn't have made in terms of the number of hours of instruction that were going to be provided. But I do agree with you that it certainly is, this points to a time where we can now go back and work with those other school systems that you mentioned, to see how we can assist them in providing strategies and also technical assistance to get to the level of instructional hours that are important for all kids, to make sure we have a level playing field. So I think your points are well taken, and I think that's exactly what we are trying to offer with this option B, giving more time for systems to get back to that standard.
This is Lori Morrow, I have a comment.
Yes, please, Ms. Morrow, please.
So I appreciate the update and offering an option B today, but I must say, I'm still really disappointed in the timing and the manner at which this has played out. These slides were not posted for our Tuesday meeting last week. We received everything through option A Friday evening, and the slides were not actually posted publicly to our website until Saturday morning. What I've seen from both parents and staff is this timing has caused a lot of confusion and frustration, when, I mean, my children today are on day two of school. We have school districts starting this week, and everybody starts by next Tuesday. I think for me, I would actually like to see more district feedback from these early weeks of school, see what they are actually being able to work with, what modifications they are trying to make in these opening weeks. And I would actually like to make a motion that we postpone any action on this item until our September 22 meeting.
This is board member Sean Bartley. Would you like to be heard?
Yes, please, Mr. Bartley.
This is Sean Bartley. First of all, with the pandemic, the situations and the numbers and the statistics and the transitions that businesses and public institutions have to make, and the decisions they have to make are fluid. And I think in the best interest of the state and the best interest of the children, I believe Governor Hogan and Superintendent Salmon received information that they believe they could rely on, and in the interest of the students and the interest of parents who are having difficulty homeschooling their children, or supervising their children, as the teachers provide instruction online, I think Governor Hogan and Superintendent Salmon are interested in meeting the parents' concerns who are having a difficult time balancing their workaday life with their children's online instruction. And in order to meet that demand and balance the demand, I believe Superintendent Salmon and Governor Hogan made their statements, so to give schools an option to go back to in-person instruction, to accommodate families in the best interest of the family and the best interest of the children. Because we know that children learn best with asynchronous personal learning in a classroom environment. So, you know, hindsight being 2020, could the timing have been better? Yes, but the information they had to rely on wasn't available in advance of the school year. And I think in hopes of getting students back in class, and in hopes of students receiving the best opportunity of a great Maryland public education, Governor Hogan and Governor Salmon wanted to give counties the option to allow their students to go back to school. So I think it's unfair to be overly critical of Superintendent Salmon and Governor Hogan when they use the best information they had available, when it became available during a pandemic, and that the and that the fluidity of that information and data allowed them to make public comment and statement with regards to their want and desire for the children to go back to school and the want and desire of most parents for their children to go back to school, taking into consideration the fluidity of the circumstance. And so although we want our public officials and our leaders to be perfect, response to a pandemic, again, is fluid, and they did the best with the information they had. So I'd just like to add that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartley. We have, Mr. Sean, if you can help me, I believe we have a motion on the floor that we need to address.
Crawford, this is Rachel McCusker.
Yes.
And I would like to second Ms. Morrow's motion. I think that given the timing, these new recommendations that we, I think it's prudent for us to give school systems time to work with their schedules and get some data on whether or not it's working, to give us some time to get some data on screen time recommendations for children. So I would like to second Ms. Morrow's motion that we suspend, so we have time for these different models to play out.
Okay, so we have a motion to suspend this action until our next meeting from Ms. Morrow, the second by Ms. McCusker. Do we have questions?
Question, discussion?
Discussion?
Senator Bates?
Senator Bates, then Mr. Wu.
Thank you. The comments that I had heard were that recommendation, option A, gave too short a time period, and I think what the ladies are asking for is something that allows you more time to prepare. And I think the option B allows that because it takes us to the end of the calendar year, which I think will give people plenty of time to analyze the data and see how things play out to deal with, as Mr. Bartley said, the fluidity of the situation. The counties are different. I've been following the data for Howard County, you know, and I've followed it almost daily, you know, with how it's going. And I think that it's going to be different in the different jurisdictions. So I think giving them until the end of the calendar year to deal with how to get back into school is, in my mind, is plenty of time. We can always deal with it later. If it turns out things turn south, we can make adjustments at that point. But I think that going from the end of September to the end of December gives the locals time to really deal with their own situation. So I would oppose the motion that's on the floor. I would be willing to accept option B.
I believe, thank you very much, Senator Bates. I believe it's, Mr. Wu, next?
Yeah, so I just had a question for Dr. Salmon. But if we do decide today to postpone action until September 22, would the September 28 deadline be postponed as well in option A? I know that, especially from a student perspective, a lot of stakeholder concerns are with the timing of things. So I think the timeline of how we act here is critical for the recommendations.
So to answer that question, Jason, if the board made a decision to postpone till the next board meeting, there would be no recommendation that would be made? If the board decided, as what has been indicated by the senator, to go with option B, school systems would have till the end of the year to work on their calendars with technical assistance provided by the state board, I mean, by the MSD.
Okay, but yeah, just to clarify, the recommendation or option A, it was stated that the school system had until September 28. So would that be revised?
The board would either pick option A or option B. So if they picked option A, the amount of time would be till the end of September. If the board picks option B, they would have till the end of the calendar year. So those are the two differences with the time period.
So if we vote to postpone till the next board meeting, option A still stands as it is now?
It would still be, it would still be an option, I assume, but I'd have to see how it plays out, Jason. You're asking me some hard questions, but I accept that from you, so thank you.
I believe, thank you. I believe, Dr. Green, you had a comment, a question?
Yes, I don't mean to muddy the water, but option A had a phrase that I don't see in option B. And that is that school systems should evaluate their reopening plans by the end of first quarter. And hopefully, that would be with the supposition that they might be able to open second quarter. And also, I agree with, well, so let me stop there. So is it, would that be part of option B also, that they would be reevaluating their plans by the end of first quarter?
And Dr. Green, you are so perceptive to pick up that difference, but it was left out for a reason. I think it did muddy the water. And so we wanted to be a little clearer. We will still be working with school systems on a daily basis to look at their metrics and provide technical assistance, working with the health officers, working with Dr. Chan at the Maryland Health Department, to provide information to school systems about their ability to bring students back. So we will definitely be working on that as well. That is certainly a goal.
Okay, then I, then I have to be in agreement with Senator Bates. I would not want to see this being put off again for almost another, for another three weeks. I think that we need to give the school systems some guidance, be it option B or option A, but I definitely think we should decide on one or the other today. I also want to piggyback on a comment that Dr. Melly McCarthy made about the students who are really being harmed by online learning. And I think our reticence to address some of the reading issues among our students is really coming back to bite us because so much of this online learning is going to really shine a light on the fact that our students' reading is not on par across the board. That there are some who will do well, but I think that there are many more who will not. And one last thing. I understand that, that teachers are allowed, or at least, I know in at least one county, that teachers are allowed to bring their students to the school with them and that they are being monitored by other staff members as their own children are online. Is that a practice in other counties and all the counties? That teachers are, I mean, I mean, it's wonderful. You know, I wish all of our parents had that option, but is that across the board? Dr. Salmon, do you know anything about that?
Can I just interrupt? I think what I'd like to do is we can, comments with respect to the motion, the motion to delay, and then we can have additional comments. But I'd like to try to bring the motion, the comments, make sure we hear all the comments and questions with respect to the motion to delay, and then have a vote. Yes, Dr. Wilcox?
Hi, good morning. I was curious if the September 28 deadline could be extended to the end of first marking period in option A, and in option A, including technical support? And if that could be something that could be considered?
Dr. Wilcox, that's the, you know, that's up to the, and I will, you know, certainly entertain whatever modifications you'd like to make, and I'll turn it back to Mr. Crawford on that.
Okay. Again, comments so that we can hear comments concerning the motion to delay, and then we can vote on that. And then, depending upon how that vote goes, then we can then deal with other items. Dr. Lee?
Thank you so much. I just had a question about whether it's possible to possibly consider the motion in steps? Because I feel like conceptually, there may be agreement that there should be a standard. And I'm wondering if we could make a motion to say we agree that there's a standard and to give guidance so that there's no surprises, could we agree that that standard would be no more than 3.5 hours on average for students, something like that? And could we at least move the bar forward conceptually about what it is? And the thing that it seems like we might be stuck on is really the timing. And the other thought, I just, looking at all the comments that came in, and I did try to look at all of the ones that were sent to us, some people were arguing to decide in the second quarter, no earlier. Other people were saying, starting second semester. So it occurred to me that we use the first quarter as the observation period for the locals to get their data, the second quarter to be a pilot to incorporate and try to implement changes to get up to the standard, whatever that will end up being, and then to make sure everybody is following the standards by the beginning of the third quarter, which is the beginning of the second semester. With that, but that's all a question of timing, which is very contentious, I realize. But I wonder if we would at least be able to make progress by making a motion to at least agree in concept that we want to have some standard that everyone can be using as a guidance.
Dr. Lee, I'm open to considering that, but I'd like to try to dispose of the motion that we have in front of us right now that's active, and that is to delay. Are there any additional comments on that? Then we can vote and go forward.
So this is, this is Ms. Morrow. Can I make one more comment?
Please.
I think just this discussion here is that we still have a lot of questions about this timing and about what's appropriate. And I would prefer to hear more specific feedback from our superintendents before we decide on a minimum number of hours. I think that's one of the biggest sticking points, is that three and a half hours and the appropriate timing for being able to implement that. And they're already doing some of that work. My kids are on day two. So I would prefer to postpone this so that we have that opportunity for better feedback on what this is actually looking like for our schools, and we can make a better determination with more information as to what's actually happening across our districts.
What we're trying to do now is to act upon your motion, trying to get comments, the last comments, and then to, then to be able to vote on the motion. General Sumter?
Yes, I can understand looking for more data, but it bothers me to wait another month, another four weeks. I think that data could be gotten much sooner. And I would recommend that in two weeks or something around that, that we meet so that we can come up with the guidance and a decision and get that to the local jurisdictions so that they can move forward on making the changes that they would have to make in their plans. Because if we keep kicking the can down the road, we're just prolonging a process of having good education for our students. And I would hope that there's flexibility with our guidance that because of the pandemic, because these are unusual times, and not every county or every jurisdiction, including Baltimore City, has the wherewithal to even meet all these criteria that we would be looking at as jurisdictions move forward. Education is local, that if they have a compelling argument on deviating somewhat from this, and they could get that to the state board and then to MSD, and then let us look at those and make common sense decisions on the local playing field that the local jurisdictions are working in.
Any other comments related to the motion to delay? Because what I'd like to do is to bring that up for vote so that we can then move forward. Are there any other comments directly related to the motion for delay?
This is Ms. Hallie, I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to the motion on the floor, which is to say that we would take General Sumter's recommendation to reconvene in two weeks, and that we would define the information that we'd like to have for purposes of that discussion. The departments had very limited time to review the plans that have been submitted. And as Dr. Williamson said, those that were surprising in terms of instructional design, they have not had the chance to go back to those district, those school systems and understand their logic in the way that they have made a recommendation. In addition to which, many of the comment letters referred specifically to children with special education needs and educational gaps. And again, as Dr. Williamson said, they have not had time to assemble that information. So my friendly amendment would be table it for the two weeks, as General Sumter recommended, and include in that motion, information requests for our two-week meeting that would include the feedback from those local school systems that proposed a plan that was less than the three and a half hours or less than the 30 hours, and what's happening, why they've designed their plans in that way.
This is Ms. Morrow. I am okay to accept Ms. Hallie's amendment.
Okay, so what we have now is an amendment to delay for, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to capture it correctly, for two weeks to provide an opportunity to get feedback from the systems that did not meet the requirements, to understand why. Did I capture it?
But yes, that captures it. In addition, I'd like the department to be able to summarize in the plans that they have received, the planning around students that have special education needs or educational gaps.
Okay. So it would be delay for two weeks to get feedback from systems that did not meet the standard, understand why, and to get summaries of information about students with special needs? Did I capture that? Did I get it? Okay. So we have a motion on the floor that has been seconded. What I would like to do, yes, Dr. Green?
I'm sorry, President Crawford. So are we not, is option B and option A now off the table?
This is, the motion that we have on the table right now is to table the motion. If that fails, then we'll come back to option A and B. But we have right now a motion on the floor that we need to address. And once that has been resolved, then we will know what to do about the other options or how we would want to proceed. But we first have to, I believe, dispose of the motion that has been made. Elementarians, correct me if I'm wrong. So at this time, I would like to ask Dr. Simpson to take a roll. All vote, please.
Mr. Barton?
I believe you have to leave.
Ms. Bates?
No.
Mr. Crawford?
No.
Mr. DeShiel?
No.
Dr. Getty?
Uh, yes, for a delay of two weeks?
Dr. Green?
No.
Ms. Hallie?
Yes.
Dr. Lee?
No.
Ms. McCusker?
Yes.
Dr. Melly McCarthy?
No.
Ms. Morrow?
Yes.
General Sumter?
Yes.
Dr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Mr. Wu?
Yes.
That's complete?
Mr. Crawford, the vote was seven in favor and six Mr. Crawford, the vote was seven in favor and six, six no. And one absent.
So with that, then the motion, the motion to delay failed. Did I get that correct, Mr. Stone?
It fails. You need eight to pass.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, for that. I guess the question now that we have is what's on the table? I guess at this point, if there are any additional comments, otherwise the floor is...
Ms. McCusker?
Yes, Ms. McCusker.
Um, I have a question about the recommendations in option B.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, on the third bullet, where it says schools must have an average of 3.5 hours of synchronous instruction spread out over the course of the day. I have a little, I'm a little bit unclear. We're talking about having, um, we keep talking about how we're going to have through the end of the calendar year to implement. So that, but that is in bullet five. Does that end of the calendar year also apply to bullet three? And also, some school systems, when they go to hybrid or some of them have put in a day where they do not have synchronous instruction happening. They have small groups and other things where they're doing a four week model. Or in the hybrid, they're talking about two days and then a day in the middle to clean and then two days. So could the 3.5 per day be changed to a 17.5 per week to give that flexibility for the, the cleaning or for the, the counties that came up with, you know, with their stakeholder groups with this plan that was four days? We give that flexibility, but also does the, the end of the calendar year apply to trying to get to the 3.5? When does that 3.5 have to be implemented? That's not clear to me.
So I can answer that. It is hopeful that all systems can move toward that before the end of the calendar year. But if there's issues with particular broadband connections and those kinds of things that may be impeding a district from being able to offer the synchronous instruction, then that's what we mean by technical assistance and providing strategies. So I think these all are concomitant. They're not one dependent on another. They are all part of the recommendation. And in terms of, we're talking now about a virtual system. All systems are virtual. No one is hybrid right now. So the, the hybrid system is, is a different system than we are engaging in right now. And as we move towards that, we'd have to look at how we would transcribe that time over that kind of a system. I think it's very doable that, that, you know, we could look at the hours across the four days, but we would still have teachers working on that day, even though they may not be in the buildings if it's being cleaned, but they would still be able to be meeting with students and doing activities like that. So I don't think that's an issue that we're going to worry about right now till we get into the hybrid system, which no one is in at this point in time.
So this recommendation is just for during our virtual learning time. This is not going to translate into when schools start to change over to the hybrid. This is just looking at our online time.
I think we're probably going to have to take another look at how things will work once school systems are all back into a hybrid or in-person model. Because luckily, we'll be, we'll be doing a lot more probably than three and a half hours during the, during the day. So I think this is really to address the concerns of the myriad, you know, parents that have reached out to, to, to me about the time of contact with the teacher through this virtual time. So I think that's really what we're talking about, people. I hope that's helpful.
That, that is helpful. And then the 3.5 per day, some parents also reached out to say that they liked that their, their district was doing a four day model and we moved to a 17.5 over the week so that we give that flexibility to the counties that have that model?
I, I don't think that's what we intend in terms of meeting the numbers of hours of week of instruction total. Because some of those counties that did that synchronous didn't even meet it with the asynchronous time to get, to get to the required hour. So I think the last bullet of B is intended to be able to get everybody on a level playing field with all kids so that we can make sure that equity is being provided across the state. But the timing is a long time. We're talking about 90 school days. So half the year is going to be gone in some cases, potentially, for students to be getting maybe what they, uh, other students are getting in other districts. So we want to work as quickly as possible, but we want to also be mindful that systems, as I said before, have issues with broadband and connectivity. And I think the board knows, I think I updated you not too long ago, that I'm working with the rural broadband, uh, uh, group here at the state with the governor's office. We also are, are providing a plan for urban broadband that's going to be stood up with the governor's additional $25 million. So we're working as fast as we can for short-term solutions for broadband as well as the long-term where we dig cables and put up towers. So that's in the works as well.
Question or comment?
Is that Senator Bates?
Thank you. Uh, but you know, it says schools must have an average of three and a half hours. That doesn't mean it's a hard and fast three and a half hours each day. It, it gives some flexibility there such that it, it's kind of setting what the goal is without specifically. You could have, you know, more one day, less another, as long as the average. I think that, that's reasonable and I think it does give flexibility.
Just wanted to offer just a general comment to what Mr. Bartley said. Having been, um, in a former life, I was involved heavily post nine 11. And, and we were, we were writing a book as we went. We were standing up a, a new department. We were putting in place new procedures. Uh, you do the best you can. Uh, you invariably miss things. The, the key to this whole thing and the key to what helped us in the post nine 11 is really that last bullet. That is when the key agencies and the key stakeholders came together and worked collaborative. As we learned, we made adjustments. As we learned, we fixed things. We also recognized in retrospect, there were things that we could have done earlier that we didn't do. Uh, but it's the key to, to this kind of an effort is, in my judgment, in large measure, is the collaboration of the key components, MSD and the local school systems. Those that are planning to, to implement or to increase their hours, but also sharing those systems that are already there, sharing their experiences. Those systems that are planning to begin to bring children back, as they bring children back, share those experiences so that we can all learn as one large education system. And our real success, our ability to execute this is really going to be our ability to learn, to make adjustments and to move forward. At this time, do we have any?
President Crawford, I'd like to, I'd like to offer a, a resolution here. So when you look at the last bullet point, it's a little confusing to me because it talks about the return to in-person instruction. So I'd like to take option B with the amendment to say that we'd like the department to work with the local school systems and for the local school systems at the end of the first marking period to either come into compliance with these recommendations or to ask for a waiver that would tell us why they need a waiver from the recommendations. And then the board can consider those waivers on a case-by-case basis.
Would you repeat that motion? I just want to make sure that I, so you're saying that you would...
I'd like to recommend option B with the amendment to the last bullet point to say that the department will provide technical assistance to implement the minimum hours of synchronous instruction and work with local school systems in collaboration with their health departments to consider strategies instead of in-person by the end of the year to return the systems to meet these requirements. And if a system is unable to meet the requirements, that the system will ask for a waiver, which they are required to do because these guidelines are in Kenla. So if they're not going to meet the guidelines, we need to give them a waiver. And in that way, if there are special circumstances for an individual school system, they have time to understand that through the first marking period and they'll have time to share their rationale with us when we consider the waivers.
Okay. Just, so, so it would be that MSD...
To choose the last part of the last bullet, instead of saying to return to in-person instruction by the end of the year?
Yeah.
It will be to become compliant or to request a waiver?
Compliant or request a waiver?
And then I'd just like, like to add that it's through the end of the first marking period, that these plans will be submitted at the, at, at that timing. That the work will continue to provide the technical assistance, see how the implementation is going. And at the end of the first marking period, they would either become, have a new plan for the second marking period or they would ask for a waiver.
President Crawford, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I've had my hand raised several times. I don't know if you can see me or not.
I can't see you.
Okay.
So the motion on the floor?
Well, I wanted to address, or ask Mrs. Haley a question because I had mentioned earlier about something that was in option A, uh, that to reevaluate their opening plans by the end of the first quarter. Mrs. Haley, is, is that what you're also saying? In option, last bullet in option A, um, it says that they should reevaluate their reopening plans by the end of the first quarter.
Yes, I'm happy with that as well.
I have a comment for classifications. So I think, Sally, you're talking about, um, I think you're talking about, um, the, looking at the synchronous learning and, and having a deadline by the end of first quarter and the first marking period and to reevaluate if they can't increase to the standard, then, then asking for waiver. But what we still have here that we haven't really addressed is returns students to in-person instruction. They're two different issues.
I, I entertain a friendly amendment. I think that that makes good sense and I think that they should be reevaluating that at the end of the first marking period.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I didn't hear you. There was some noise going on outside.
I, I, I would be happy to accept a friendly amendment that they should also reevaluate return to the classroom by the first marking period. And I, I still want, not as part of this amendment, but I still think we need to have that summary from the department about what's happening in the existing plans for kids with IUPs because that was a requirement.
And, and I, I agree with you. I think there are two separate issues. One is the synchronous learning and a second issue is looking at ways to return children to school in, in a safe way. So, um, I, I agree with you on everything and I agree with separating those out.
Yes, I, I also agree. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Um, I also agree, um, that schools should be looking at reopening, um, as, as soon as possible. Um, so it, I'm offering an amendment to the amendment that, or I think Dr. McCarthy has already said about separating them out, that at some point, we should be saying that school systems should be evaluating their reopening plans by the end of the first quarter. And, and even so, I don't know if we can really say, or if we want to say, with the hope of reopening for the second quarter or either moving into a hybrid, something, something to kind of move schools along to looking at reopening because the babies need to be back in school.
I think the issue is the term reopening.
Big one.
I think the issue is the terminology reopening, technically, even with virtual education, schools.
Open, yeah.
So I think we have to be careful of the use of reopen. So separate out the virtual synchronous requirement and then the in-person.
True, yeah.
Let me try then to see if I have captured this. So what we're looking at is option B. And when it comes to the fifth bullet, please help me on this one. What we're saying is that we are basically splitting out the fifth bullet. So what we would say is that MSD would work with the local school systems to provide technical assistance to implement the minimum synchronous hours by the end of the first marking period. And if the systems cannot become compliant by that time, they would need to request a waiver. The second point...
I'm sorry, President Crawford, it wasn't by the end. I would just want them to have a plan because I don't think we can ask them to turn on the dime. So they can keep their plans now, but with the help of the department and the technical assistant, I would like their second marking period to be compliant to...
So they have to come compliant in the second marking period?
Correct. Thank you.
So that they would have to then become compliant in the second marking period or request a waiver? That's for virtual.
Mr. Crawford, is it possible for, I, I'm not sure who has the slides up, and Dr. Williamson or somebody, to type this into the slide so that we can be clear what we're actually going to vote on? Or create option C, maybe?
Thank you, Ms. Morrow. Dr. Senator, would you like to answer that?
That's up to Dr. Cr, that's up to President Crawford.
If we can do that, I think that would provide a little bit more clarity and then we can... More complicated states.
President Crawford, can I make the comment?
Please, yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm just wondering if it's possible to break this recommendation apart because there's so many pieces to it that everyone would have to agree to everything on it to vote yes to it. Um, because my other concern is for that last bullet. It's, I think everyone's referring to the waiver about synchronous learning, but I think the other point is that virtually all of the schools are not needing the 30 hours a week learning, whatever kind of learning, right? Um, so that's a point that I think we also should be making sure MSD is working with the local superintendents to get the total learning up for all of the students at every grade band. Um, and I also wasn't clear on the 3.5 hours. I am totally supportive of having some level of standard, but it wasn't clear to me whether 3.5 is the right number or three. Um, because the vast majority can be three if it's an average of three spread over the course of the day. So I'm just wondering if it might be more practical to split it up a little bit so we can at least vote on some things that should pass, like we all can agree hopefully that there should be some standard and direct the MSD to come up with that and maybe different options for us to consider. But I'm worried that if we keep tweaking that fifth bullet, it has to be to everybody's satisfaction and not comprehensive right now to total learning.
This is Dr. Getty?
Yes, Dr. Getty.
I think everybody is saying that they like the sentence in option A that's, um, school systems should reevaluate their plan. So if we cut and paste from option A and put it into option B, have your separate idea. have your separate idea about reevaluating plans for in-person learning.
It's not just in-person learning, right? It's both.
Yeah.
It's synchronous, asynchronous, and in-person, or hybrid, or whatever it is. But it's also total learning, right?
But you wanted to separate the two things out.
Or perhaps make it comprehensive.
Could I go back to just answer Dr. Lee? Because I think, Dr. Lee, what you're saying is in the first and second bullet, we do expect school systems to be open for students 180 days and a total of six hours per day. And actually, in high school, it's six and a half hours today per day. Wasn't going to get into the weeds with this. So I think that covers it. And in terms of a waiver, I mean, again, the board would have to set up some kind of criteria, because equity is of a huge concern here. We want kids to have the very best education possible. I would do everything we can to support school systems to need those hours, and that's what we would do in the timeframe. The other issue is we can't type on a PowerPoint, but we could move to a Word document in just a second, and Mary can cut and paste from A and put that in to B, and everybody can take a look at it. If you would like us to do that, we'll do that right now.
I know I would, if I pleased you that.
That would be helpful.
Okay, Mary, thank you. Would you go to a Word document, copy Recommendation B, and then add the one line from A that the board would like to include? Let's give Mary a minute to do that.
Okay.
And I guess while we're waiting for Mary to transition, I just want to make one comment about the idea of putting a waiver into recommendation. Waivers exist in our law. Systems know that they have, they can ask for waivers based on certain circumstances. I would just be cautious about putting a waiver that already has a regulation attached to it into another recommendation.
Thank you.
President Crawford?
Dr. Green.
Now, are we also going to be addressing that part in Option A that talked about reevaluating their reopening plans by the end of first quarter?
That's what we're putting into the Option B, Dr. Green, in just a second.
Okay.
Mrs. Haley, while we wait for the amendment to be typed in, my question is, Dr. Salmon, could you respond to Dr. Lee's question regarding whether the three or the three and a half average is the appropriate guidance, given what we've seen in the plans that are submitted?
I'm going to ask Dr. Williamson to address that. Dr. Williamson?
And unfortunately, I was writing, so could you just repeat the question, Ms. Haley?
Dr. Lee has noted that if you look at the plans that were submitted, if we had an average of three hours, most plans would be compliant. And she asked the question about whether, you know, where did the three and a half come from versus three or some other number? If you could respond to that?
Well, I think Dr. Salmon answered it earlier. An average of three and a half, and that's because across the week, you have some schools that will really need to have more than that. And we had looked at, you have six hours of instruction and three and a half hours of the teacher in front of the classroom in the lower grade right out through the day. It's probably very helpful, because those students need guidance and guided learning, and then they need to be on their own, and then they need guided learning. And at the high school level, they also need, probably for each of their core content areas, they would end up with more than three hours. And when we did those bands that we're not doing, but when we did the bands, we had had more at the upper levels. But we had also been very cognizant of the need of instruction at the lower level for guided instruction. I also think some of the school systems probably have more time involved in synchronous learning than they think, and it's going to take a conversation with them as you ask us to talk about what they really were considering as synchronous. But it's very clear, when you look at the tables, that some people had not even shown with asynchronous and synchronous a six-hour day. So it's going to be going back and talking to everyone individually, find out exactly what they proposed in their plan. They should have six hours. We've always talked to six hours or six and a half a day, probably a little bit more.
So, Ms. Williamson, this is Rose Lee again. Could you clarify, so when you say average of three and a half hours, is that an average across all of the grade bands? I was thinking it was an average within the grade band that on average, over the course of a week, they should have three and a half hours. Did I misunderstand that, and it should be really across the grade bands? What does it mean when you say average?
I really should ask Dr. Salmon what she means. And I think of that, I was thinking across the grade levels.
Oh, yes, that's correct. That's correct. So Mary's got this thing typed up here, folks. Mary, I think really all we needed, after you've done such a great job of tightening recommendations on page, is the board wanted to have the bullet that says under A, the one they want to add to B is, "School systems that have identified they are not returning students in person until second semester should reevaluate their reopening plans by the end of the first quarter after nine weeks." Is that correct? Those people that wanted that in there?
Yes.
Okay.
So move that to B.
Right, and then take the rest of A out so we don't get further confused. And if you can make that a little larger, that would be great for the people that are viewing this online.
So is this represent? Ms. Haley, does this represent the amendment that you were?
I need to stay on for a second so I can tell you. But the problem I'm having is with that last bullet, that's the last bullet now, the end of it that talks about the collaboration with the local health departments to consider strategies. That talks about the transition to in-person. And what I'm really trying to understand is, where have we discussed that as long as students are remote and they're not compliant, that the department's going to work with them to get them into compliance with that remote experience?
That's in that fifth bullet, that first part, is that they work with them, the synchronous to get them into compliance?
Well, maybe it needs to be divided out, because what it sounds like is
Drop the second, the second hand up. You can take the second sentence out.
Yeah. Because that's now covered by the next bullet.
Would it end after synchronous instruction?
Yes.
So so in that fifth bullet, the sentence would end after minimum hours of synchronous instruction period, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Mary, can you do a strikeout for us, please? Thank you. All right, there we go.
So, Ms. Haley, is that the motion? Can you restate your motion that you?
President Crawford? I'm sorry. On that last bullet, can we add an accountability piece where schools should reevaluate their reopening plans by the end of first quarter and submit those to MSD?
I think it's good to add that, Dr. Green, but that is part of the evaluation that we showed you last Monday. But I think it's very appropriate to add it here in this recommendation. Thank you. Does it also go with that saying, Dr. Salmon, that as the department reviews the plans that are submitted, that you'll provide that summary for those children that have IUPs or education gaps?
I think Harold indicated that Mrs. Franchowski was going to be doing that for our next board meeting on the 28th. So you'll get that information, and we'll have that in a summary for you then.
Okay, thank you. Then, yes, President Crawford, this is the amendment I'd like to propose, if there's a second.
Amendment, we have a motion from Ms. Haley, and then a second from General Sumter. Now it is open for questions.
This is Rachel McCusker.
Yes.
The fifth bullet now doesn't tell us when we want school systems. We had it that it was going to be by the end of the calendar year, that we were going to work with school systems to reach these synchronous instruction benchmarks, and now that's gone.
I'm happy for the amendment to modify that. I'd like the new plans to be implemented for the second marking period for bullet number five.
So it would then be synchronous instruction by the second marking period?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McCusker, for raising that. It's still open for questions. If you'd like to speak, let me know, because I can't see you. Dr. Lee?
Could I get some clarification in how the department computes the average? Because it is not clear to me for that third bullet how that's computed. Because I saw it with all the plans, and I thought I understood that it was students in the band, but now we're told it is not that, it's across all grades. So do you just take all the students as the denominator and the number of total hours taught as the numerator? Could somebody just clarify, so there's no ambiguity when this goes out, how we're calculating the average?
Dr. Salmon, can you address that?
Dr. Lee, I am not a mathematician. I'm a lot of things, but I'm not a mathematician. But I will have Dr. Shaw help us explain this in a very meticulous manner. When we send out this as a direction, we'll include that information in there, but I need her expertise in order to do that.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's simple and clear for the locals to do this.
And I totally, totally agree with you.
Thank you very much. Any additional?
Dr. Getty has something?
Dr. Getty, please, yes.
I think what Dr. Lee is saying is just, first, there has to be some clarification on Bullet Three. There are two ways to look at it, is think what Rose is saying.
Pardon me, pardon me, Dr. Please mute your phone. If you are not speaking, please mute your mic, please. Thank you.
So one way to look at Bullet Three is that a third grader has 3.5 hours average during the week. So one day is three and one's 2.5 or whatever, as long as it's 3.5 average. But I think what Dr. Salmon's intention is that really it's a cross-grade level, and so sixth grade could be four hours a day, and second grade be three hours a day, but as an average, it's 3.5. So there needs to be some more words to clarify in there. 3.5 hours across grade bands? Is that what you mean, Dr. Salmon?
Again, I think we were just trying to get to a general picture of what you just said. I think all of, and I should have remembered what a good job you were with math, or what a talent you have in math. But I do think that's the case. I mean, I think we're going to make it as flexible as possible, but we want to really have some kind of a baseline. So whether it's across the grade levels, and as you said, we would expect the higher grades to have more synchronous learning each day. And you see that in the chart. I mean, you see, for example, Charles County, you know, they're way over the required hours with what they're doing, even at all grade bands. So I think what you say is correct. We'll certainly provide the expertise and the technical assistance when we implement this. But right now, it's just part of the recommendation so we can get more specificity when we roll it out to the school systems.
Question, President Crawford? President Crawford?
Dr. Green, I was on mute, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. In that one, two, three, four, fifth bullet, where it says synchronous instruction by the second marking period, are we talking about the end of the second marking period or the beginning of the second marking period? Perhaps we should put that at the fine.
Beginning.
Beginning?
In other words, they would continue with the plans that they have right now through the first marking period, and then based on the work that they do with the department in terms of technical assistance, they would be prepared at the beginning of the second marking period to be compliant.
Okay, then we should, I would imagine, also make, just to have that same kind of language in the next bullet, so reevaluate their reopening plans by the beginning of the second marking period? Or is that, are we saying six of one and half dozen of the other?
The only question I have here is, and then I defer to Superintendent Salmon, is if you need to do this work and you need to put it in a document that needs to be submitted, it obviously backs up the timing, because you have to write it, it has to be reviewed, it has to be submitted. So if we say the beginning, does that allow adequate time for this department to work with the local school systems, help them to develop a new plan, and have it submitted for implementation in the second marking period?
I would say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
It's a question, yes. Yes, Senator Bates.
Okay. A question, when we get into the number of hours, minimum one and a half or three and a half and so forth, isn't that already in COMAR, or am I mistaken?
Say that again, Senator, I'm sorry. Which one?
We're putting in here an average of three and a half hours synchronous and a minimum of one and a half. Aren't some of those requirements already in COMAR or not?
No, the first
This is totally new?
Yeah, the first two are, because we've never had an option for virtual learning, you know, this degree. So
So we didn't worry, okay, got it. I'm sorry, I'm just a little confused on that, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much for asking. Any additional questions, comments?
Yes, I'd just like to remind everyone with these timelines, we talk about the local we talk about the local jurisdictions. But remember, the superintendents have to go back to their local boards of education for this to be approved as well. So we've got to understand these timelines are even more compressed for the local jurisdictions. And we have to be sensitive to that as we move forward. So it's not just the system designing something new and answering the mail. They also have to present that at the local level for local board, put on a local board representing their jurisdiction.
President Crawford? Rose, Lee?
I'm sorry, I can't see who.
It's Rose?
Yes, Dr. Lee.
I just am uncomfortable with, I'm a little worried about the aggressiveness of the beginning of the second marking period because I'm worried that as schools are experiencing the first marking period, then by the end, they'll have a pretty good idea of where they can make improvements. It would, I feel like it's more practical to consider the second marking period as kind of a pilot or implementation period where they're actually starting to implement their perceived plans of how to get to the target. So that by the end, and also they may be dealing with returning back in person. So like the earlier speaker said, there's a lot of fluidity in this. And I guess I'm a little concerned about making everybody be compliant by the beginning of the second marking period if they have a long way to go. So I'm just wondering if it maybe is more pragmatic to have it be by the end of the second marking period.
Except for Dr. Lee, you said those things that you thought they should be working with it during the second marking period to see if it would work. So if they're going to work with it, they have to implement it at the beginning of the second marking period. But I do think, which is the reason why I deferred to Dr. Salmon, you know, I think that General Sumter raised a good point. It has to go through their own local process, et cetera. And I don't know if there's adequate times to do that. So maybe it's implemented during the second marking period as opposed to the beginning so that that gives some flexibility as they deal with their own processes. But my point here is that we need to have them moving in the right direction. So I'm comfortable with during.
Okay, I'm comfortable with during as well.
So we would modify the motion to replace beginning, but, and we would insert during the second marking period, correct?
A comment about that? I think Mary just need that change, President Crawford.
Yes, Dr. Green. You are muted, Dr. Green.
I'm sorry, if we say during the second marking period, that goes all the way up until mid-January.
You know, one of the things that I think we have to realize is that we are in an emergency, that everyone does have the intention to serve their students, that there are different resources across the counties. And I think people are doing the best they can in the timeframes they allow. And what they're looking to the state board to do and the department is to provide guidance. And so I think what I hear from all my colleagues is we want to continue to march forward to improve the situation in terms of equity and instruction. And I think this is guidance to do so. But also acknowledging that local school systems are in the driver's seat in terms of how they execute and what their processes are to get input.
But I also, this is Dr. Getty, but I also feel like the school systems that have a lot of work to do and are off target of the 3.5, there also is a sense of urgency in terms of what Dr. Salmon is asking for equity. So to put it off that you don't have to comply for a half of a school year is a long period upon.
This is Dr. Green again. I completely agree with Dr. Getty. That is, in my experience, is just too long to, you know, yes, we want to give some time. We want to be sensitive to that, but by.
How about the midpoint of the second marking period? I just feel like because of their own processes, it has, there is some, you know, I have some hesitation about how quickly people can turn. They have been working on their local plans for a long time and they have to go through their local boards as well. So I would expect them to do it as soon as possible. But if you are not comfortable with during the second marking period, we could say implemented by the midpoint of the second marking period. Which gets it, early before, it's before the end of the calendar year. I mean, basically, it would be.
I was going to say that goes back to being before the end of the calendar year would be the end.
Yeah, that's where we were.
That's where we were.
This is, this is Rachel McCusker.
Yes, please, Ms. McCusker.
I agree with Ms. Haley that we need to give some deference to the local boards. We need to give some time to this. And all of this jockeying of it's going to be beginning, middle, end, I think that by the end of the calendar year was something that earlier in our discussions, everybody was kind of on board with that timeframe and feeling like that timeframe was a reasonable one, which still puts us in the second marking period and gives not quite as much levity as one sort of, I feel like it's a compromise point to go back to the original language of end of the calendar year.
So. So what we would do is we would modify this to be that they would have the synchronous hours by the end of the calendar year, essentially what we had before. Instruction by the end of the calendar year, okay?
So Mary's making that change right now, so we'll be ready.
Mr. Crawford, I have one more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to Ms. Haley's point, we haven't mentioned in here anything about the need to look at what we are doing for children who have IEPs and children who are in the groups that show the course academic achievement outcomes. So I don't know if we need to say anything explicitly in here or if it's, or are we waiting for the data from Mrs. Franchowski? I just don't want to lose that point because we all as a board, or many of us on the board, seem to feel that that's very important.
Great point to just put an exclamation point on. And maybe that's something that we consider after we look at the data that Ms. Franchowski provides us at the board meeting. And then, Dr. Melanie McCarthy, you could make any motion you wanted if we need to do something with regard to the information we get.
That's fair enough. I just don't want to lose sight.
Put something in with a focus on or taking into consideration the needs of students with an IEP. We put that in just to emphasize that point.
It's not just students with an IEP. It's children in a large group. At least learners. We have very clear data on which groups of learners are not making the achievement that they should, so.
Be worded some way that would be general enough, but focusing on students who are having difficulty with the current mode of learning or something to that effect.
It's actually already one of our 13 non-negotiables, correct, Dr. Williamson?
That's correct, Dr. Salmon. I couldn't get my microphone to work, yes.
So that is in their plans, Senator, to deal with that. But we can, again, take a look at the data. And if the board wants to make any other recommendations, we can do that at the board meeting coming up.
Just as a point of clarification, I believe all that we really wanted to have in that bullet was synchronous instruction by the end of the calendar year.
Thank you. I was about to bring that point up.
That's all, okay?
That's right.
Okay. So are there any other comments? If not, then we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a comment.
Please.
So.
Mr. Wu?
This is Jason Wu.
Good to see you.
Yeah, so I was looking at the student engagement projections on, I believe, the ninth slide. And Cecil County has 2.6 hours of synchronized learning for four days of the week, whereas Charles County has six and a half hours of synchronized learning. And it might not seem like a lot, but I just noticed a lot of disparities. And, you know, doing the math for that whole week, it's a 16-hour, almost a 16-hour difference in synchronized learning. And so I believe, or I assume that bullet point three was to address those disparities. But I'm just concerned that just with the confusion around specifically the word average, it doesn't do what it's supposed to do. And I mean, even amongst us, if there's confusion, then I'm just concerned that local counties and local school systems will have concerns and confusion around that phrasing as well. So I just want to turn our conversation to bullet point three.
So I believe that what Dr. Salmon said is that they are going to provide some additional detail, but clarifying information in terms of so that the systems, the systems would know exactly what they would need to do in order to achieve the on-average 3.5.
This is Ms. Haley, President Crawford. I'd just like to amend that bullet point to say across the grades because I think the intention, as Dr. Salmon has already said, is that older students can focus for a longer amount of synchronous instruction than younger students. And so it's not within a grade, but across the grades.
Mr. Wu, is that satisfied? With the additional clarification that they would provide?
Yeah, I second that amendment. It makes things a lot clearer.
Okay.
Yeah. Ms. Haley, I think that's exactly kind of where we were in the beginning. And then we kind of, you know, took a look at how to define that. And I think grade bands possibly makes it easier. So I think across the grades is good.
Okay.
This is Joan Neely-McCarthy. I have one more comment.
Yes.
I am a little concerned in the last bullet with the word reevaluate because I don't know what that means. Is it revise? Is it, you can reevaluate and have the same plan or you can revise and change? So I'm not quite sure if the rule of the board is to leave it with reevaluate or if the intention is to revise. I'm not quite sure.
The decision on how to return to in-person, if I understand correctly, is a decision that the local board would make. That's their call. So I'm not sure that we can tell them to do it. I think we can tell them to reevaluate. A reevaluation hopefully would include some strategy around return. But at the end of the day, it's ultimately their call, I believe.
That's correct. Okay, and then the other piece is, how about in-person learning as opposed to reopening? To make it clear.
In-person learning, that makes it clear.
That's a good edit.
Yeah. Okay. So make that in-person learning.
That's also in the, in the beginning, a few words before that, it also says in-person. Do you want to have it twice?
I see your point.
Yeah, you're right. I think it's there already.
Yeah, yeah, I see your point.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, I believe we have a motion. Ms. Haley said that option two, as it currently stands, is her motion. And I believe we had General Sumter who made a second and the second change. And the second, so he's second. And what I would like, yes?
I have a question. Dr. Salmon, do we need to put in a date as to, or our timeline as to when those plans, in-person learning plans should be submitted to MSD? Or is it good to just leave that open?
I think it says by the end of the first quarter. That would be nine weeks. And that will vary depending on when school started. So I think, I think we'll be.
That's when they reevaluate. And then they're asked to submit it. So does that mean that they should submit it by that time?
I thought that's what the intent was.
I guess we shouldn't assume that people would.
That's true.
Should we say reevaluate their reopening plans and submit to MSD by the end of the first quarter?
Or you could just put a date in there, by something.
What would you suggest?
I'm thinking.
The end, this is John, the end of the first quarter gives you some flexibility as they stagger in as opposed to you getting
Right.
24 plans.
Let's say that we would need to have the plans prior, pardon me, prior to the, let's say by the second, let's say by the third week in November because that would encapsulize everybody that started sooner or later. Is that fair? If you want to have a time on it.
Before Thanksgiving.
That's what I was going to say, but I couldn't remember exactly whether it was early or late this year.
The third week.
That gives you time to review and so forth. That would give you plenty with the holidays coming up.
Well, hopefully, we will have been doing this all along. And hopefully, it won't be as heavy of a lift as what we've been doing in terms of evaluating their plans now. So I think we'll be okay. And if we aren't, we'll ask you for a little more time to get back to you.
Good, thank you.
President Crawford?
Yes, this is Dr. Lee.
Yes, I'd just like to, again, go back to that bullet on the average of 3.5 hours across the grades.
Yes.
Because the next bullet is half-day pre-K. So does grades mean K through 12 or 1 through 12? Can we just be clear? Because if that half-day is 1.5, to average to 3.5 means you're going to have a lot more than 3, you know, 3.5 to get to the average of 3.5. So I would assume we're not counting pre-K in the grades.
That's correct. That's why it's its whole separate bullet.
Okay, can we just add parentheses after the grades, like K through 12?
That's up to you, Chris.
Is that, do you mean, that's what you mean?
Ms. Haley, is that all right with your amendment?
I'm fine with that amendment, yes.
If there are no additional comments, I will ask Dr. Simpson to take a roll call vote. And thank you very much, everyone, for your engagement. Dr. Simpson, can you help us with the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bartley? Ms. Bates?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes. Yes.
Dr. Getty?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. McCusker?
Yes.
Dr. Melanie McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Morrow?
Yes.
General Sumter?
Yes.
Dr. Wilcox? Mr. Wu?
Yes.
The vote is complete.
Dr. Simpson, this is Elliot Schoen. I did not hear Dr. Wilcox. Is she still on the meeting?
I don't think that Dr. Wilcox is present and I don't believe that Mr. Bartley is present.
Thank you. Then the vote was 12 in favor and two absent, and the vote passes. The motion passes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. If there, I appreciate all of the engagement and all of the work on the part of the board, trying to come up with a way forward. If there are no other, oh, Dr. Getty, yes, please.
Can Dr. Simpson send us all a copy of the option that passed?
Yes, we'll get that to you. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Dr. Green?
Yes, I just wanted to, again, bring up the question that I asked Dr. Salmon, if it's a practice across the school districts that teachers can bring their children into the school building?
Dr. Green, I don't have that information. Again, that would be a local school system determination, but if you'd like us to query that, we can, we can take care and survey.
I would. You know, I love my teachers, I am one. But again, the disparity, you know, between our teachers' children and the children of other working adults, that they have that monitoring and that ability to come into the school building. So just, I would just be curious as to whether that is a common practice.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Lee, yes, thank you.
I just wanted to echo the comments of an earlier speaker that, you know, it is a really difficult time, and I feel like the department is navigating waters without precedent. And I want to at least applaud the secretary for looking at new information as it comes along, which we can't predict, and trying to do what's best for children to make sure we're using the new information and trying to incorporate that into actions throughout the state to really help narrow the gap and help all children learn. Because we all know that kids learn better when they're in their schools. So I just wanted to reiterate that this is a difficult time, and I know we got 20,000 signatures on a petition, I totally understand that, but I also feel like we have a responsibility to be the voice of pushing for looking at policies as things evolve. So thank you, it's a difficult place that you sit. I don't envy you having to make these decisions, but I hope you feel our support in helping you do the best you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lee.
I'd like to add my voice to Dr. Lee's, that the department has been doing an outstanding job in navigating uncharted waters. I talked with a parent yesterday, and he was explaining how on Monday, this relative was going to be watching his children, and on Tuesday, this relative, and Wednesday, but he was fortunate that he had an extended family, he was able to do this jockeying. But it really helps, and I know it helps our parents, definitely our students as well, to have them back in school as soon as possible, especially when our health metrics are showing that the virus is on the decline, and our students need to be back in school.
Yes. Ms. Hallie, yes.
To that point, Dr. Salmon, can you share with the board, I know that there are some camps that have looked for extensions, and there's some daycare programs that are looking to use some school property to provide that essential service. Can you share with the board the experience that we've had over the summer of camps or daycare and any COVID impact in those experiences?
Well, I'm not Dr. Chan, I feel more comfortable with her answering that question. But to our knowledge, we've had, we had two very successful in-person school, summer school programs, as you guys know, in Calverton and Worcester with no cases at all. And we had few cases since the end of March in childcare. Mostly it was staff-related and not student-related in terms of any COVID outbreaks. And some of them were suspected and not substantiated, you know, because not everybody was getting a test at that point in time, in the beginning. But I do think that our folks that are out there working with kids right now are being very careful and using the CDC guidelines and masking and washing hands frequently, and the children are washing their hands frequently too, and taking breaks outside. And I think that there is a way forward, we just have to follow the guidelines, and we have to make sure that, you know, that everybody is doing their job before the kids come to school. We don't want to have anyone coming that's, that are sick. And I think we, you know, we are making sure that parents understand how important it is to make sure everyone's healthy. So I think we have a way forward, and I'm so anxious to get out and visit some of our school systems. I have a visit coming up next Tuesday and one the following Monday. And I'm really anxious to see how things are going, and I'll be able to report back to the board a summary of the visits I make in September at our September board meeting. So I'm looking forward to giving you a kind of a snapshot of what I find on these visits.
Dr. Salmon, if at any time you feel lonely, I think there are members of the board that wouldn't mind accompanying you to some of those schools. So just let us know. I think, we don't want you to go by yourself, we want you to-
I understand, I understand, President Crawford, and I will certainly be happy to have many of you visit with me. That's been the highlight of my last four years, have been the school visits. And it's been my honor to say that we've had more state board members visit our schools than ever before in the history of the state. So I am very proud of that accomplishment of your board and the prior board for doing that. So we will definitely keep that up as a, as something that we are going to be doing in the fall and throughout the year. I can't wait till we can, you know, get in and go spend time up in the western Maryland and the eastern shore and seeing how things are going. So we'll certainly get dates out to all of you, and you can sign up, and we can have a great time when we visit schools. We might not be hugging the kids this year, but we can smile at them and give them our virtual hugs.
Very good. Anything more for the good of the order? Yes, Ms. McCusker?
I am late for a 504 in Health Concerns meeting, so can I make a motion for us to adjourn?
Yes.
Seconded, Ms. Hallie.
Seeing no questions, we'll take a visual voice vote, so make sure you're on screen. All in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
The motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you much, everyone, appreciate it. Have a great day.